Point. It is seven, seven oh one, if everybody really stand for budget allegiance. Budget allegiance.
Statue of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bonds, public comments.
I'm just wanted to say briefly, thanks, Eric. You and I had a lovely chat today. My house will be tested again for PFAS, which I think is important. But we also had a good chat about what's happening with the. The budget pro or budget software. It may be good for you to bring everybody up to speed on what you know about it and what are the next steps?
I'll do that during my comments.
All right, so, sounds good. Thank you.
And, well, yes. So everybody here is a subject, so. All right, moving on, approval of minutes. Motion to approve minutes that are in the packet.
I will make that motion to approve the minutes.
As written, second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried unanimously. Uh, refunds, there is a single refund at this month, and then we find it in my packet. On you go. All right. Uh, I would like to make a motion to. Prove the following refund to Jason Smalley of fourteen Kelsey Road, Connecticut, in the amount of twenty dollars for excess payment. Okay. Guess that's your second then, because I made the most. All right, any further discussion? Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried unanimously. Uh, next up, we have department reports. You have some department reports in your packets, but I see we also have. Conolly of. For education. Who also sent us something, if you have additional stuff you want to say.
Oh, sure. Uh, some quick updates. Um, so I, I did, I sent you the summary of the December meeting and some other things that have happened recently. Uh, HKHS cross-country teams, both the girls and the boys, uh. Uh, oh, shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't write down. Quickly, what they accomplished, but they, uh.
They presumed one state. I mean, that's not unexpected.
Both girls and boys have been extremely successful and came to our meeting and were honored. Uh, both BES and KES were awarded a school of distinction again. BES three years in a row, KES two out of the three years. They are very competitive with one another and Dennis will make sure that every single year he is awarded school of distinction. So that's a really big deal for both schools. Sixteen high school students were accepted to the Southern Regional Music Festival, Most Well Edition for All-State Festival. Um, the HKHS thirty-sixth annual telethon took place on December twentieth, they raised over ten thousand dollars for HKYFS. Uh, which is really exciting, especially since it's, it's for youth and family services. Um, initial superintendent, the superintendent's report, initial budget meetings have been completed with administrators. So the budget process is already started. Um, all RSD seventeen schools passed the area health district annual health and safety inspections. Um, also, human resources is preparing for the new changes in the Connecticut paid sick leave law that'll take effect this month. The high school was notified that the eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollar Perkins loan has been approved.
What was that?
The. Perkins form? Perkins grant, I'm sorry, Perkins grant. So doesn't need to be paid back. Also, this year, we're bringing back the Washington DC trip for the middle school. Which we haven't had since COVID, so we approved that last month, which is really exciting. Um, especially for those of us who, whose kids missed it. We, uh, feasibility study update, which I'm sure everybody is concerned about. Um, we are well on our way with our meetings. Joel and I are both at old meetings and are on the study team. Um, representatives from Antonasi Architects and also Arcadis came to our meeting. Um, and, uh, discussed the first draft of the educational specifications with us. All board members were able to provide their questions and comments. And we, and also. We have some initial first drafts of potential. High schools to potential high school design, so we're really making some, some exciting progress. It's, for me, it's really exciting to see. Some, like an actual image of what a school could potentially look like. Um, so it's, I personally am really thrilled to be part of that process. Um.
Just touching on that real quickly, is the proposed or expected date for a referendum on that still March?
Yeah.
Twenty?
Like around the twenty-fifth, yeah, so we are still on track. We. Will need one more meeting to review another round of potential, uh, building drafts. But, uh, we are still on, on track. That was, that was definitely a big topic of discussion. Um, so.
All right.
Uh, so we plan to approve a plan at our. February twentieth meeting and then March twenty-fifth, potentially a referendum, which is a Tuesday.
What is, how do these new options now differ from what we were given a year or so ago with, you know, option? They've been able in like six A to.
Yeah.
Nine or whatnot, so are those completely out of the picture now? And is this a whole new kind of redo, reexamination of it?
We were, we're working with a different architecture firm, um, so there. There were lots of potential options in the past. Um, there's a lot more information going, these are much more informed.
Yeah. Instead of that being, hey, let's redesign. Re decide, this is.
Right.
Contingency like blueprints, no kind of, of a high school with, with actual mock-up plans. So where classrooms will go, how many classrooms there will be square footage of those spaces. So it's beyond just the. Philosophical.
Okay.
Renovate the high school as new. Down and builds, it's beyond that philosophical, I think it goes on, and much more detail.
Okay.
But it's also important to remember. That this, this isn't, this isn't the stage where all the. Finite details come in, so we do actually have a plan to look at where classrooms are drawn in, but. It's really the next step where all of those exact details. Will come in, but there were very specific things that the community really wanted to keep, like. The pool, the fieldhouse, um, the auditorium, they are working very hard to keep everything that the community said loud and clear. They wanted to keep, so, um. And we're, we're all very much on the same page with that. We want to really honor what we've been told. So we, we just had our annual, um. Our semi-annual, uh, board ed workshop on Saturday. Joel, we missed you. We all get to spend almost an entire Saturday together, just working on board development. Um, the superintendent provided an academic update. Um, and also, we spent two hours with the architects, just discussing how the, um, the process is working. Pretty exciting to finally be at this stage.
Interesting moment.
Yeah, yeah. That's it.
The referendum for that will be one more. Only ask because I got a question today from our registrar voters, because they need to know when to reserve.
Yep.
KES, so, because there is some planning that has to take place.
So do they have a particular date I want?
They had, uh, they didn't give me a specific date, I wish they needed, but I'll send you an email.
Okay, that would be really helpful, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions about any of the department reports we've received? Uh, budget report, budget reports are not in your packet, and you provide them digitally. Questions on those that I can reply? Okay. In that case, moving on to appointments, so you have a list before you. That was handed out earlier, um, of the individuals who. Uh, either failed to qualify, in this case, that just means didn't show up to get sworn in.
Yeah.
Um, which happens every year, there's a few who got a month, don't make it. Um, but then there are two additional ones. Uh, the first is Derek Phelps to the Cable TV Advisory Council. This was requested by them. Uh, that he be appointed, um, and the second is Mary Casey Jacobs to inland wetlands water courses. Um, there's an open spot on that committee to be filled and, um. She volunteered for. Say they're not committed.
And we're gonna re-nominate the. Folks that. Failed to qualify?
Yes.
Okay, they suggested that.
They plan, yes. For, for most of them, it is a matter of, yes, they will be, they just didn't get them.
I understand.
That time of year.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Use, use the copy you were handed today.
Okay, so this here, okay, so. Um, these were individuals that were on but just failed to.
They didn't get sworn in for this.
They were already appointed.
Yeah, we already, we appointed them last month.
Okay.
They had the thirty days.
And they've been again, they want to be.
They were reached out to and.
They were reached out to.
Okay.
Nobody said no.
Hey. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, for some of them, we expected them not to, to sit where in, in time, but hey. It is what it is.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to approve the appointments as presented?
I will make a motion to approve the appointees as presented.
And we get a second.
I will second. Um, and. All of these, since. They've already been appointed but failed to qualify, uh, I think it's still worth asking that, you know, the. With these members being appointed to these boards, do we meet minority representation rules and all of the?
Okay. Uh. The only one that is a question is Sustainable Connecticut. Um, I need more R's or U's for that one. But there is an open question as to whether, uh, sustainable needs to be a town committee? And whether we can spin that off, whether we can spin it off to be some sort of advisory committee.
Okay. Even Griffy is appointee, there are still openings on several.
Yes.
Um, it's correct.
Yes.
And that can be found.
And that can be found on the website, website is pretty accurate.
You're looking at people.
Uh, so, do we know what committees are still, do we still need to slot people?
Yeah, we have that list, and I just can't remember it off the top of my head.
Previous packet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's like open space, uh, inland wetlands, we need one more. Leave committee on aging might need one, and then.
Harmily, I think, I don't know.
Harmily has another one at this point, yes.
Have we heard from any of the town committees?
No.
Okay. Um, I've heard from town committees.
And remember, the town committees is, you know, taking pride recommendations, you know, but it makes things smoother, but you know, if some random Joe Schmo off of. Sunset Farms wants to join a committee, I think Sunset Farms is a route.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
So if there is still a vacancy on the inland wetlands commission, I know it's, I think there's been a vacancy on there for a while. You know, for a R, and if we.
I might be incorrect on inland, but yeah, go ahead.
So, um. I, so there is, I know one that would be interested in serving in the inland wetlands commission. Um, so there's a spot open for a Republican.
Yeah.
Um, I can recommend someone for that.
Okay, double checking that and.
Okay.
Fill it in. This, all of a sudden, I'm doubting the numbers in my head on which committees have which numbers. I've stared at it like multiple times over the last few months, but.
To be less.
Well, it just has the one that you just put Mary.
Oh, okay.
So, so Mary with that slot, is there any still?
No, we're still fine because we have two unaffiliateds and an R on that slot, so. Um, and because of minority rules, it's just a. Two, three, five. Can't count to that, two, four, six, seven. Yeah, it's, I think, five. Could have five D's, this would put us at.
We have total on inland wetlands at the moment.
Three. Uh. Six, we have total, a total of six, Mary Casey would be the seventh.
Okay, and then that fills.
That would fill it.
That would fill it.
Yeah, so there is, yeah, okay.
We've heard the discussion.
No further discussion.
On favor of accepting, uh, the appointments as presented?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. All right. Old business. KBFC needs assessment update, so Rick and I have spoken a little bit about, uh, where the KBFC needs assessments at. Uh, we spoke. Last week, last Friday, Thursday. Um, a little bit about it, but I know that you, Todd, are the primary point of contact for that. And I know you're here for the other fire company item.
Um, as it stands, we've, we, Rick and I have gone back and forth with Michelle from Silver Petroselli. Um, we have discussed our needs as far as what we need, and they've programmed it into square footages. What they generally do is they sort of mock up a look of a building. And how everything would fit, and then try to fit it into what a rebuild would look like. Um, she's been on vacation for two, since Christmas, she's, I think she just came back this week, so.
Okay.
We should be talking to her soon, to review her latest, when she comes up to us, but, you know, it's moving.
Yes.
It's just, and then it's a matter of plugging in numbers and seeing what things look like, and what's the best options and how we work with that.
So, I just wanted to provide that quick update for you guys, since I know that has been kind of a.
It's a process.
Yes.
And what's the time, did you?
Yeah, what's the timeframe and kind of vision on this, so like?
I would think we're gonna wrap this part of it up in the next probably two months.
Yeah.
I would think over the winter we should, so. And come back, so where you guys are gonna actually have some stuff to chew on.
So you think we'll be discussing this, this budget season?
Uh, I don't think so. I think you're gonna. I think that would be rushing things way too. Way too much.
At the moment, we have the fire company. Building there kind of plugged into the twenty thirty, thirty-one year, um, just because of the timeframe.
For through all the.
All the PFAS remediation and other capital needs in this campus. Um, but it'll be helpful to have that information, more solid numbers. Um, so. Are you guys currently doing with space now? I know that's a. One of those.
A little cramped, our top priority.
Measuring the millimeters?
We are.
Have you guys gotten the, I know you were talking about installing some vertical.
Yeah, we went up, we've gone up, we've moved stuff out, we've thrown stuff out, we've done everything we can do, we're still out of space. You know, we, the, the truck that we parked behind the firehouse has kind of played a key role in, in recent calls, traffic control and. You know, it sits out in ten degree weather, and sometimes it'll start, and sometimes it won't start, so. I mean, when we come in for the budget, we're, we're gonna talk about that, we're looking for a home for that vehicle and possibly one other. So it's, it's, it's one of our, our highest priorities right now, is, is we have no space.
And I've already told them as well, I've told you, Rick, that once the work has been completed on the barn, this preliminary work to.
Mm-hmm.
That, that truck goes into the other bay. Um.
Okay.
So. There'll be a fire truck and a police car.
Yeah.
There, in the near future.
To follow up on that, do we? Know roughly a timeframe?
I don't have a timeframe for you on the barn.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Does it help kind of address some of, you know, your needs?
Yeah.
You know, like if that comes online in one, six months.
Yeah, it's gonna be a long process, and this is not the weather to, you know, do exterior painting and.
Yeah.
Uh, removing boards, so.
Sure.
That's kind of what we're at the mercy of.
Okay.
Any other questions before Rick and Todd about the needs assessment before we ask them questions about the fire engine later? Old and new business on this agenda is a little bit of a mixed. Kind of a, you know, we threw a dart and decided where.
Just maybe one more thing before moving on from your needs assessment, you know, it's any. Any temporary ideas, any feasible temporary ideas, you know, that we could, that you guys have thought about that?
We have, and when we commit for this year's budget, we, we have, we have an idea that, uh, if we were to erect a two to three bay. Metal building somewhere on the property that we could get this particular truck inside one additional and maybe some storage space in the back. Uh, so we will, we will come in as part of our capital proposal for this year.
Because we can complement the.
Yeah.
The barn.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're open to collaborating with the town, because you know, you guys are out of space also. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna come in and address that, that'll, that'll buy us some time, and then, you know, the thought is, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, but the thought is, when we get this information back. Is we would look to propose like an incremental build so that we could kind of pace ourselves with growth. Uh, so that's gonna be, I think we're gonna talk to the architect about that.
Moving on to hiring update, um, so. Town continues to hire people, um, so we've chosen a candidate for the assessment clerk position, um, and she'll be starting in the near future, um, obviously. The last week and a half, um, it's been a little difficult to, uh, handle personnel matters, um. But we'll be sending out a formal letter or offer to this candidate this week. Um. It was actually a very difficult decision, and it was kind of. Do we address the needs that we have now more critically, or do we kind of start planning for the future? And we thought that addressing the needs right now was more pertinent to critical. Uh, our options this year. Um, but we got some great candidates, uh, for the position. Um, also, the public works operator position is being advertised, um. And we're gonna give it another week or two, uh, I wanna let Chris, our new public works director, uh, get his feet under him. Um, a little bit better than the last we provided him, but, you know, trial under fire.
I was gonna, just about to say that.
I'll get more into that in a second. Um.
That was a huge tree.
We'll get to that in a second.
All right.
Um. But, um, Todd can. You've spoken to Chris a little bit about this, hiring for these sort of positions is a little bit of a difficulty right now. Uh, we've actually had some good qual candidates, uh, apply, so.
Operator.
For the operator position, um, and so, but, you know, the state, a lot of the. This type of work is getting vacuumed up by companies like Pratt and Whitney and Electric Oak, and so.
Yeah.
Um, that's just kind of the labor market that we're in.
Yeah.
Um. With that said, though, our public works director started last Monday, um, and things are going off to a great start. He had an unexpected snowstorm, uh, two hours into the job. Um, followed by a downtree on a power line on Green Hill on Tuesday. Followed by an exploding water tank in public works garage on Wednesday, so we still have a public works.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, thus far, seem, things seem to be working out well. Um, he's coming up with ideas to change practices, and the crew is responding favorably, so. We're gonna keep that momentum going and move forward. Perfect, that's great, that's what we're, questions on hiring?
No.
Right, then I'm gonna move to the follow-up to that, now that we've hired a director of public works. I wanna thank all the members of Public Works Hiring Committee, um, for all the work that we. You and you put in, um. It's time to dissolve that committee. So can I get a motion to dissolve the Director of Public Works Hiring Committee?
Still moved.
In a second.
I'll second that.
You, any further discussion? This is the moment where you guys say thank you to all.
Thank you.
Yourself. Specifically to Rick and to Annie as well, for all the effort they put in and our Rick. Yeah. In particular.
We're really excited about. I think he's fit very nicely.
So. I want to thank you, Rick, especially for all the time you put in. I know you've been juggling two hirings now for the last month and a half, and congratulations to you as well, and you're hired down at Valley Shore.
Thank you.
Um. With that said, any further discussion? All those in favor of dissolving the public works director hiring committee, and I've said it two different ways.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Goodbye. All right. Next up, new business invitation to bid, class A fire engine for the KBFC, um, so. The bid package is basically complete, um. We're just waiting on one little component from finance to be able to send it out to bid, um. Obviously. In the last week, um, so that is set aside for the moment, but once Gina's back with us, uh, we'll be ready to get going on that. Uh.
Puffer truck?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So. Guess the motion I'm looking for is to go out to bid. For class A fire. Yes. What? That's.
I'll make a motion that we present an invitation to bid on a class A fire engines for killing worth volunteer fire company.
That's a motion you made.
Yeah, can I get a second?
Yeah, I will second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, discussion. Uh, this is the other reason why Todd and Rick are here, uh, Todd has been point man on. Designing slash building out slash figuring out what the truck looks like. Um, so, you know, I was reading through it and. Pressed by the details to what goes into a fire truck, but, you know, given how critical this sort of equipment is as we're seeing.
What it costs these days.
And it lost.
The last that we were talking was about one point three, one point four?
We're approved for one point two, four, three, six, so we're on there.
Yeah.
Not that.
What are we expecting? But still, are we still anticipating in that ballpark?
What they're saying, but I don't take that is a million.
Okay.
Okay.
But you build in enough contingency for.
Yeah, I mean, the number that we always put in there, we've always just. Our, we have a spreadsheet that we've always programmed, and the numbers are carried out over the purchase of the truck, and one point two is what it said we should have, and that's.
Sure.
In the ballpark of what these trucks are going for.
And, and based on all your specifications you've come up with now for this truck, how many? Many companies do you think that, that will answer this bid?
It's, it's hard to say.
They're only like a hand.
Well, that's the thing, you're getting down to the point where when you used to have ten or twelve companies out there that would build a truck like this, they quad each other up. So now it's, if you, if we can, I'd love to see at least two. I'd like to see three, I mean, to me, the more people that bid, the sharper the pencil gets.
I think the last one was like one or two.
Um, yeah, the, the rescue was only one, I believe.
I, I think, I'm, I'm talking about like the larger.
Uh, that were the engine five, and we had. We might have had two.
Yeah, I was looking through.
Because it's still running, did I hear correctly, like twelve, eighteen months?
Yeah.
Still kind?
No, no.
It's not.
Three years.
Hmm, okay.
You will not lay out a penny for the first two years, it's be two years just for the cabin chassis to come in. That's the way they're running right now, and then he wants the cabin chassis, it comes in, it's a year to build it, the rest of it. So you're, we're looking right now, we're looking at three years from the day.
Before you.
Before we ever see it. Yeah.
And we pay and. How do you pay?
Generally, the way, I mean, we put in, there's different proposals, but the way it's been done in the past, cabin chassis gets delivered to the vendor, we pay for that. Which gives us a little bit of a, that gives us a little bit of a discount. We pay for that, which gives us a little bit of a, that gives us a little bit of a discount because then the builder's not paying interest on that money.
Got it.
He's not carrying it, we own it at that point and then the build, and then there's incrementals in that, would that next, that last year build? However, they decide.
It really doesn't start until a year from now.
Right, almost two years, yeah, almost two years.
So we would anticipate one twenty, end of twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight.
We're coming, we're twenty twenty five now, so if we're deciding, yeah, we're twenty seven, yeah, we're twenty eight.
But we knew that.
We're mid twenty eight before we're going to see it. Also put, put the current truck at twenty eight years old.
And it's, I mean, I, I know you guys know what you're doing, but that, that truck, you, you guys can still. Do what you need to do for the next three years with what you guys got over there, hopefully.
We, we were lucky, we maintained fairly, we've maintained our apparatus well, so I guess. We're, we're comfortable.
Do we sell that or do we donate it? What, what has been the past practice? Is there any money in thirty year old?
Some small town in like Vermont, you know, one.
Yeah, you, I was still trying to sell it. Don't ask Elizabeth, she doesn't want to hear about that.
We, we have one behind.
Yeah.
Our pro auction, so.
Did you second?
Yeah, you did, yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
As we get the ball rolling on this long.
Alright, then all those in favor of putting this out to bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you guys, thank you for all the hard work we put into designing this, you know, for so much time.
Forty hundred, twenty two.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Truck's going to wash itself now, right? Spoilers, enough to that. Budget twenty five, twenty six is next, um, so this is just to remind you that we're entering budget season. Seems like so, not so long ago, we're just leaving budget season, um, at the moment. I'm going to be having a meeting with Superintendent Webby. And you've got where to discuss where their budget is looking, um, but obviously the. One of the big problems that we have this year is with the change in student population, um, we're seeing a shift. In pay.
I haven't lost like.
I haven't lost fifty students and Killenworth gained one, which is results in a one percent shift. Uh, in the cost sharing, I think it's. Fifty nine and something, something and forty points. Which is something, something, which is a significant change, that's a. Five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Assuming a zero budget. So. That's. Well, the March twenty fifth referendum would, those costs would be borne out in the future, um, so I wouldn't. I wouldn't include that in this year's budget, but as, uh, future expectations for bonding and, um. How we would have to borrow money, um. And I will say at the last board of finance, the last board of finance meeting, or the second to last board of finance meeting.
Or they met with a bond.
Yes, we met with bond council and, um, it was actually a very productive conversation, um, so. Um, that's kind of an open question for the future and how we would work into that sort of bonding. But setting that aside to go back to this year. Um, the other big open question and Todd and I were talking about this before the meeting started was. Or is what is going to happen with Mira and where our trash hauling is going to go? So. This is, um, our tonnage averages for the last ten years. Um, and ironically, one of the problems that we're suffering from is, um, we've been very successful. In, uh, reducing the amount of waste that, uh, all the communities in the region produce. So on average, uh, I think Senator Needleman at a meeting we had last week was saying. The region produces about, of the towns in the region that sent trash to Essex transfer station. We produce about ten thousand tons of waste, of, yes, solid waste, I should say.
And I, I think we mentioned this at the last meeting, I brought this up, so this. Dude, does this tonnage represent also what's collected by private haulers?
No, that would be the second column there. The first column is just what comes out of our transfer station.
So the total tons here, total tons.
Yeah, the first box is what comes out of our transfer station, the second box is what comes out of the haulers who are hauling to the correct location. Um, there is. As part of the hauling agreements, they are supposed to haul to Essex transfer station. Currently, there is action against some haulers who are not doing so. We're not one of these towns where that's experiencing this, experiencing this, um, but. What's important for this is flow control and basically it's you direct where the trash is supposed to go into your communities to make it make economic sense for. Mira to handle that trash. The big problem is Mira is dissolving, and so there is a lot of pressure across the state. Where different regions are doing different things, different towns are doing different things. Um, and so what the future looks like is very uncertain. Um, there've been a lot of conversations about, uh, trash. At the Rivercog level between all of the local municipal CEOs who send trash to Essex.
So Essex is the, essentially a regional hub.
Yep.
For a lot of municipalities waste.
Uh, it's eleven towns who send trash to Essex, eleven or ten, I can't remember. Yeah. And so. Essex is also kind of a weird position because. Essex leases that location to Mira or. Lease is probably not the correct word, but it's, it gives you a good idea of what that sort of situation is. So when Mira dissolves, that transfer station will go back to, uh, the town of Essex and for their. For them to decide how they operate it and. That's one of the question that, questions that's up in the air at the moment, um, and.
Will Essex continue to accept?
The region's waste to be sent somewhere else. The other question is, obviously, there is a lot of money involved in hauling trash. Um, and so. There are a lot of haulers who are putting bids or trying to gather interest and. Personally, I think that it makes more sense for the region to stick together as a bargaining unit, uh, when it comes to this. Uh, one of the reasons that mirror was first created was, um, back in the seventies and eighties.
Uh, so basically, we're kind of unsure at this moment of what cost would look like. For us, like, let's say, next year.
Next year is a little bit firmer, um, in the preliminary budget that we've been expecting, we plugged in, I think, one hundred and eighty. I've heard a different number recently that's a little bit higher than that, uh, two oh four, yeah, that was.
So we could probably just expect it to go, we can assume that it would go up as a result of this.
Yes.
One thirty one right now.
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, that's the number all the way at the top there. Um, or actually, no, that number's missing, you have last year's number. Um, and so, kind of the question is. If we ban, if the towns remain together and operate a cohesive unit, one of the ways we could do this is a regional waste authority. Um, and the Rivercog has a study out now, or spooling up a study to. See if that would be feasible or joining with another regional waste authority, um, in the area. Um, to sort of manage those costs or whether we'd go our own way, which might be cheaper now, but. Five, ten years down the line, who knows?
So would that look like us going our own way, that's probably essentially finding a private hauler that we would just. Contract with to haul wherever they, but then they would probably haul to Essex. But with excess not being around. If they have to drive farther, probably more, so. Do we know? I, I know this could be, you know, a hard question, but will we, as time goes on and this process goes on, you know, will we have a firmer picture of? What this landscape looks like, you know, so we can kind of predict and anticipate costs in the future.
That is one thing that all of us, all the CEOs are very eager to get a firmer picture on. We have a call on Friday, I just had a call this past Friday with the chair of, uh, Mira. Um, and that is very much the question on all of our minds.
Is there a date of when that, whatever that, that, that arrangement between?
July first.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could be looking at. We could be talking here in the summertime being like, oh, wow, okay, price per ton now is.
Well. There are indications that Essex is willing to continue the current contract that, uh. Because Essex transfer station currently has a private, uh, manager, um, to continue that contract through its end. Which would buy us another two years.
Twenty seven is what it was supposed to go with.
Thank you, um, and, uh. That's.
So July second, we're not going to find ourselves like, oh man, our transfer station is like.
Full.
Getting full, where do we take this?
When, we should not find ourselves in that situation.
We're just going to pay more.
So you've got, we've got one thirty one currently and we're anticipating like a. Two one eight, one between one eighty, two oh five for next year.
Part of it is, we've heard two different things also from, um. The board of directors on Mira recently because they do have a tip stabilization fund, which is supposed to. Prevent this sort of rapid increase in costs and it's a pretty healthy fund if I recall correctly.
But it's going to be for municipalities to apply to.
It's what, no, it's not for municipalities apply to, it's for Mira to cover the cost of, um. What it costs to ship trash.
Cause I guess that's kind of what I'm like digging down into, you know, it's like, are we going to see kind of a. Like, like, are we going to see like a holy moly like now to haul it out, it's doubled.
I, I bring up this conversation to let you to.
Yeah, we can, we can dig more once we go into that, but.
And this is, I've kind of been mulling these over and so we have the one eighty six number plugged into, uh, the budget for the upcoming year.
Okay.
The two oh four number, I think it was like last week I first heard it, so, um, that hasn't really factored in yet, but. The budget that we're presenting soon to all of us.
Has one eighty six.
Yes.
Maybe. That's based between one eighty six and two.
Right, which is kind of also why we want to think about, you know.
Okay.
The other big thing I want to talk about is the, um, multi-year plan and how we focus on that. Because there are some big numbers in the upcoming year under the multi-year plan. Biggest is actually station two, which I believe we've talked about as. Is that really a feasible number for upcoming year, but we can have a further discussion about that.
Yeah.
Um, but the other part of that is, and I believe I mentioned this in one of the last meetings we had was. Uh, before Chris started as public works, both Wayne and Mark asked me about. Switching the position of the triaxle and the other, Bob and Sander. The triaxle is what hauls our trash to Essex and. The triaxle that we currently have is the one that gives us, the truck that gives us the most trouble. And so, um, if we do have to haul trash further.
We want that to work.
We want that to work, um, there are other options for trash hauling in. I say, I'll say state, uh, region is a little too small, but, um. This is kind of the pressure that we're under this year.
Okay.
Um, and so, I'm just kind of priming the pump to, you know, let you know that when you see the first budget.
Do we have a calendar, like going back to the item here?
Do we have a calendar in place? We don't, we don't have specific dates. That's kind of one thing I wanted to talk about too, we want to, um, set up some initial dates after, uh. Like reserve Tuesdays in February.
Yeah.
Tuesdays and Thursdays, or special meetings. Just in advance.
Evening.
Yeah, evening. I don't want to do, and we can add more as time goes on. If necessary.
Tuesdays work.
Okay.
It's cool, these are villains.
Well, we can, we can also, if one just have Tuesdays now and Wednesdays.
Alternating Mondays between.
Yeah.
Or select them.
Yeah, oh yeah, we can absolutely do that and we can add.
Do Monday alternating Tuesdays, something like that.
And the regular meetings of board of selection are going to have lots of budgets.
Yeah.
And it's so, so. I'll speak for you. Yeah, okay, so we'll focus on Tuesdays for special meetings. Plot that out, send you a schedule, um, we're going to have the budget to you soon, but again, uh, last two weeks have been. Last week has been. Anything else about calendar? Let's keep your, more of each other soon. I don't have COTS, actually I do have COTS, they're in the basement of the EOC. Uh, moving on to keep the meeting going, KES PFAS RFP, so, um, you received a draft version of. The RFP, uh, together for the filtration system, uh, for PFAS.
And this is a person we met with.
It's not in there right now.
But that's what we met, when we met with A, not AZ, but J.
Rich Disrey, GZA.
GZA, there it is. Okay, gotcha.
Yes, um, this is all the same design, it's just the legal. Language to get it out drafted, I sent some comments back to him this afternoon because there were some points that needed to be clarified. Um, the two big ones are, um, some of the language regarding whether it is a. Can't remember the word for when a contract fires meeting the state guidelines for pay. On my mind, if it's so under a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, file a state bidding regulations.
Not state bidding regulations.
Revailing?
I'm sorry.
Revailing wage?
Yes, thank you, prevailing wage, oh my God, I've been thinking about that word for two hours now, um. Whether this counts as new construction or renovation, um, I'll accounts as renovation, which there's different thresholds. Um, and then whether. What the actual dates that this will go out are, go out are, which kind of depends on. This meeting tonight, if you guys are comfortable with what I sent, I understand it, I'm sending it to you today. I hope to have it Friday, but. But if I can, so I'm going to throw out a motion, okay? To, um, go out to bid for the KES PFAS filtration system. As. Presented.
As presented.
Well. Not as presented, I mean, the phrase that, motion, apologies, Jamie.
Like, why is it hasn't changed?
Cost hasn't changed. Yeah, this is the bid to see what. So. Make a motion to go out to bid for the, put out a bid for, uh. AES PFAS filtration system. That's the motion I'm going to make.
And just to reiterate, this is the, this is the same thing that we had a meeting with.
Yes. It's the same system, design specs.
Design specs we, we learned about, it's the same.
The only minor differences would be, uh. Not using like copper pipe versus.
But the.
Yes, substantially.
No substantive changes from that designs, and we're looking at a March seventh, is that date still?
That date is, um.
Maybe.
That's one we would like in five, but it depends on when we put it out, so.
With plans of doing it over the summer when you're on break, correct?
Definitely.
So we would like to hit that March seventh date because that gives us a little bit of extra padding for, you know, supply chain.
Must be.
Yes, that is one other comment that.
That's a condition of.
Yeah.
Work scope.
That would be a condition, one of the comments I presented back was um. That there is um. For the work.
The G Z A doesn't do the actual. Construction component, they just design.
Okay, okay.
Just look at the word because.
Liability insurance, it's not liability, but you know what I'm getting at.
What will we kind of? Anticipate number of. Bids that would get. Turned in. So when, when all the installation was going on in the homes here on Wolf Hollow.
I don't know, uh, I don't know if that was necessarily bitted out. That was also a state project that the head state handed over to the town. Maintenance, so. Um. I don't know if we would have that information for the state bits.
The state, they routinely update the individuals who would bid on these. So they look to see who's the lowest cost vendor and then they keep them on the list.
Yeah, so it's kind of like the D A S list, but.
Yeah, and and Safe was the.
Yeah.
The company at the time, and probably still is.
Thanks. Um. I'd say like two or three.
Yeah, it was a second.
Yes. He second did it. Um, okay, so then all those in favor are going out to bid for this project, say aye, aye? Okay, I scared you next slide. Um. And Andy corrected me on the uh school district number, it's four hundred seventy, not five hundred and seventy. When I was talking about the one percent in. Sorry, I just saw that, um. Stop reading my. Um. Next item is health district renewal and. So. This was me uh misreading something. Um. We are part of the health district indefinitely for the agreement. Um. I misread the document, the agreement, and thought it said that we have to renew it. What's being renewed is um the member of the Board of Directors. So there's a three-year term for Killingworth representative to the Board of Directors for CRAD that comes up in February. Currently, I am feeling. Finishing out the term.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it's typically the C E O.
Yeah.
Um, so this term ends on February twenty-second, I wanna say. Um, and so. We need to.
So you'd like to be reappointed?
Yes, to crack. Correct.
Or the directions.
So the CRAD Board of Directors.
Got it.
On um.
Is that a simple motion? I I make a motion that we reappoint Eric Otter to our CRAD Board of Directors.
The next three-year term, the next three-year term.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? It's really, I'm sure you can attest, Nancy, a riot. Running.
Yeah.
Meetings, so. Crowd does a lot of good work, um, being fully serious now. Um, it is a great benefit to be part of the health district, um. So. All those in, all right, any further discussion? None? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you, we'll let them know that. Okay. Um. Second public.
Just real quickly, just listening to you talk about the filtration system for K E S. Does anything different with the R F P since we don't own that building and working with the school? And approvals, because you're going out to R F P for something we don't own, gonna use taxpayer dollars to pay, so how does that, how's that? Work and how's that different from the normal process?
There. I'll answer this question now, it it's kind of a difficult question to answer, because that's kind of been.
We definitely dug into.
Yeah.
We did those pieces.
We were more focused on the responsibility, but we've been in communication with the school district facilities managers. Um, one reason why uh it wasn't, the work wasn't finished in the last summer was because. The school district lost their previous uh facilities director early in the year, um. But we've been in communication about coordinating uh contractor walkthroughs, that's one element of the R F P that hasn't been finalized, um. And meeting their dates and requirements for uh bidding regulations, so.
I guess I'm just asking, so there's nothing? The school is allowed to have somebody else pay for work on one of their buildings, is what I guess I'm asking.
It's more that because of the primary responsibility for cleaning up.
Oh, okay.
Issue is the towns we are required to pay for, so. In a way, it's left.
Just because there's funky rules about school districts taking money.
Yeah. That's kind of been an open question, and every time I poke the C T deep and.
You know, there's just a lot of capital things, they don't even want us donations because then they have to maintain it, so now. Whose job is it to maintain this system? Is it the towns because we paid for it or is it the schools? And that's all in the document that the school, basically anything that happens with it will not have to pay for it. Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, it has the same deal with um filtration systems that have gone into home, private homes, the town is responsible for maintaining them to. Certain extent, some things like filters are um. Someone's responsibility, but in cases where there have been leaks or um. Trying to think of another flume map. Uh, it is hard to. Say that it's not coming.
It's just slightly different because houses.
Right.
That was.
Right. And no, houses pay property tax, the school doesn't pay us property tax, so I just was making sure that there's not anything that's.
Yeah.
It's a icky, I mean, it's a difficult situation.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And there's long-term planning and being, I'll get to that in when I get to my comments, but.
That's a good question.
It is a good question. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none. You too.
Sure, my my comments are just very brief, uh, this evening, one as I wanna. I'm excited about the Public Works hiring, I I that the, he's gonna be a real asset to this community, I think I was really impressed. Uh, with his, with the conversations we had, so I think we should be excited about his appointment. Other thing, I just wanna follow up on on Lisa's, a part of the, I urge folks to just, uh, there is, I think it's on the website, all information. We're trying to host on the uh high school feasibility working group. Um, that's what we're calling now, yes, team, working group, team. Um, but that is moving along, it's moving along quite swiftly. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of, I I would sort of urge if you're interested in that, instead of trying to digest at the end of the day. Massive amounts of data, just to try to keep up with that on a weekly basis, because it is moving along pretty swiftly. The next step would be sort of finalizing those cost expectations are coming in. And then we are right now anyway on track for late March.
And our meetings are open.
And our meetings are open, you're welcome.
Are you sure they're getting posted? Cause I think there's only your meeting schedule posted.
Okay, they, it's, I, I'll check, they should be, cause that was one of the.
Yeah, I can check too.
Their time.
Sorry.
Um. But yeah, that was one of the things we insisted on to have that information out.
Well, I guess, I think this is our first meeting of the new year, so officially Happy New Year, you know, to. To e- everyone and and I always appreciate, um, you know, the Board of Ed and different departments coming in and giving us an update, so I really appreciate that. It's good seeing um. Here at the Fire Company as well, you know, we're definitely invested and wanna do whatever we can to give you guys what you need and. Um, also wanna thank too, cause gosh. The uh, it was great seeing Santa Claus in the fire truck, uh, that was, that was a lot of fun, I. Really, I I think I recognized Santa this year, so um, but.
Did you really?
I think I did, yeah.
Multi-benefits from our recent decision.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, so it was good seeing him in there and um.
Santa, Sam.
Yeah. Um. I know, not not to, you know, put you on the spot, I know we have two guests here, so I, just to acknowledge our guests here, you know, hopefully you are. So, you know, at least not to put you on the spot, you know.
Uh, a pleasure.
Well, yeah. And uh, I think, yeah, I I've split, expressed similar sentiments over the, the. Public Works Hiring Committee, you know, I appreciate all the work that the committee did. And uh, now looking forward to filling in the operator role and just kind of keep things rolling. Uh, and I think.
I'm gonna start with the easy stuff first and I'm gonna get to the budget software and P F O S. Um, so work is proceeding on the multipurpose field up at K R P. Uh, they started blasting last week, um, and I've actually got a piece of rock on. One of the tables back in my office, um, so things proceeding well there. Uh, Fire Marshal is comping in their actions that they are undertaking. Um, but. No, this is the multipurpose field.
Okay.
I actually just got an email today about the pavilion at K R C about when. That they'll be starting that work soon too, but. That's.
Started now for the multipurpose.
Yes.
Field.
It's been in process since the beginning of December, actually, so.
Do we have a completion, do we know, like a tentative completion?
I don't have a tentative completion date for you, um, actually, they're supposed to be done by like February, end of February, so, um. And they're proceeding at pace, so. A lot of work is being done. Um, I actually saw a lot of that work that has been done recently, um, so. Uh, the second thing, I wanna apologize for all the uh confusion, any confusion that was engendered last Tuesday about the transfer station. Um, I sent out two emails, the first uh saying it was closed and the second saying it was open in the span of thirty minutes. Um, as we discussed earlier with our new Public Works Director. Um, there was the question of if the power outage that was affecting Green Hill would also affect uh the transfer station. Uh, with the winds, we had also actually lost power here at Town Hall once or twice. Um, and so. It was all out of, we don't wanna turn people away at the transfer station doors, um. But um, I apologize for any confusion that was engendered, I know that the transfer station, as we've talked so much about trash earlier. Is one of the highlights everybody's week in this town. Being a little facetious, but I'm also not, um. You don't need to line up at one o'clock to get there at two, like.
Socializing.
Socializing, sure. Um. Next up, I'll talk budget software a little bit, um, that is an ongoing process, obviously, um, as with any sort of uh software. Or project rollout, it takes time to get acquainted with software and uh to do the work we're lot, required to. Uh, get it rolling, um, I know Board of Finance has a role to play in. Uh, getting the su- budget software up and running soon, um, you know, I have a role to play in getting the budget software up and running soon. Um, but as anybody can attest, uh, you can expect things to fly. Be flying straight and then all of a sudden. Get a curveball, um. Think I mixed my metaphors there, but we're still continuing to work on getting the budget software. Operational, um, I know that that is one of Gina's priorities. Um, but there are a lot of demands on everybody's time, um, one of the questions that I've had is. Is the staffing level in Town Hall appropriate for all the responsibilities that everybody has? Obviously, this year, given the budget realities we're facing, might not be the right year to address those concerns. Um, but. Uh. There is a time pressure, the same goes for the permitting software, so. Continuing to work on it and hopefully we will have it up and out soon, maybe not in the, during this budget season, but. Um, it is definitely something for. Future, I, my focus has primarily been on the permitting software to make sure, because that is really. One of the more forward-facing uh pieces that people will be interacting with more regularly than the budget software. Um, and that is also a process uploading all of our permits and. You have one permanent, one full-time staff member in the budget office and. Or in the building department, and so. There have been a lot of constraints on her time as well in recent years, so. That said. Um, we're working on getting everything up and running, we're a small town. But it will take time. Uh, and finally, P F O S. Um. Obviously, we're moving forward with filtration system at K E S. Um, as Eileen pointed out, there are long-term capital costs associated with any sort of project like this. Um, two of the future components of P F O S are. Uh, remediation of the soil, which that has been contaminated, um, that would be the next stage. Um, and that somewhat ties into the others, one of the other subjects we talked about, the uh firehouse. Um, and what construction of that might look like. Um, the other component to it is what is the long-term, um. Providing of water to residents killing with both, but. And so that is something that I've been discussing with our environmental. Uh, engineers at G Z A about and also with connected water and what that might look like, and that is. Further into the future, but. Um, it may be that we see some sort of change in. Our uh how water is delivered to the town. Uh, at least part of the town in the future. Um, and so that would be a more permanent fixture. It'd be a very capital-intensive fixture and a very costly endeavor, um. But that's just something to keep the awareness of. Um. Kind of ties into a question I wanna ask the town and have been wanting to ask the town for last year of. What is really the vision that we have for the future of the town? Um, we all love it here, uh, there's a reason we moved to Killingworth. Um, but we do have to be aware that the only constant is change. And um, things change, the town's changed over the years. Uh, you can go to the State Library and look at the aerial photographs from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen sixty-five to nineteen ninety-five and. There's a lot of trees, but there was a lot more farmland in the past, and then all of a sudden, there's a lot more houses. Um, and, you know. What do we like about Killingworth? What can we keep? How do we manage our growth, our expectations? That's gonna be a critical question in the future and. What's changing? Gotta adapt. Um. And try and put something out. To one of the papers as soon as I get a few minutes to. Think of how to write a paragraph, sure, Nancy, you can.
With a rattle right off the top of my head.
But, uh.
Underjust writer right there.
Sure. Um, but. I think this is something that we all have to think about as residents, because. It's important. But that said. At what cost? That said, um, it is eight oh nine. Thank you, everybody, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting with no further business of the horse.